We already do it in the town of Stewartstown, town of Monroe, Shelburne. The board can confer with them to see what their experience has been. It has been positive because we're there as a direct patrol. So if they were here for a four-hour block, based on that money, based on what the last numbers were, I believe it was 48, so about once a week. So once a week aside from us already doing everything to include all the sex offender registrations that all those are state police, the pistol permits, the board can receive them. It goes to the state police, does the background check, essentially does all the labor, descended back just to be handed out. So that's something that will still happen. So all this is doing is giving the town more visible police patrol coverage on top of all the other duties that state police already does, which is answer emergency, non-emergency, any call for service. This was the numbers for last year pulled up in the town. Dalton and Coas County had 421 calls for service. Unfortunately, the PD, Chief Dahl, answered three out of 421. So if you feel that $15,000 is being utilized appropriately, then by all means do it. This is giving the town and the taxpayers more visible police patrol coverage in a uniform capacity to be here on those four-hour blocks. What will they do? They will patrol the town of Dalton. If any calls for service come in while they're here, they will deal with it. If they arrest anyone, have to record or anything else like that, they get injured, the town is not liable for that. The state will pick up the dollar on that because you're still working for the state in that capacity being subcontracted. On those direct patrols, once they're done, you actually do an actual log to indicate what you're doing, which then gets to the board of selectmen and they review it. Then if they feel, hey, we want you to do this or do that, they can express that, it's disseminated down and moves forward. So what this is doing is providing more police coverage that's visible in a patrol capacity to the town on top of everything else that the state police already currently does in the town of Dalton, which is pretty much everything.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Comow, 805 Faraway Road. Matt, can you just explain to me how that $15,000 is going to give us how much more patrol?
So yet again, with the money allocated for the police budget, that depends on how the board of selectmen works with our assistant troop commander who deals with this. They essentially figure out, hey, what do we want for hour increments? Typically, with the way we do it with overtime, it's four-hour increments. Typically, it won't be less than that because that's pretty much the standard, how it goes. So say for four hours. The town and the board is the one that tells our troop, assistant troop commander, what the town wants, what the townspeople want. Hey, we want you here this Friday night. Either pick a time or we want you here between like 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, or whatever it may be. If there's a town function, like town hall or anything else like that, do you want someone here like today, Stewartstown? People were voting. We had someone there for six hours at the polls in case there was any issue in Stewartstown. That's what they wanted. And essentially, we're doing this as a direct service to the town. While the trooper is here, he or she is the town's bona fide police patrol officer during that four-hour block, six-hour block, whatever the board of selectmen wants. If any other calls for service come in and they happen to leave because it's a really pressing call for service, the town is not still getting billed for that four-hour increment. It starts the state fixing up with that. What else? That's how it works. It goes back. The board works with what they want, on what days of the week and how often. Yet again, if you only want 15, 15 will get you so much. And that's what they'll work out back and forth. On top of that, aside from doing it, what has been a very beneficial thing, I know in Monroe, I mean in all the towns, Shelburne and Stewartstown, it allows troopers to get even more familiar, intimate with the town itself. Because what do you do? I mean, you're patrolling for four hours, so you get to see all the town roads and become very familiar with it. How does that benefit the townspeople? Well, when the troopers are responding, maybe not on that detail, but outside of that detail, providing new other police services, now they know where all the town roads are. So therefore, the response is better because you know where the town roads are. You're like, okay, I don't need to look at a GPS or ask someone where that is. I know exactly where that road is because I worked these patrols. And for four hours, what am I doing? I'm driving around all of these roads, looking for criminal activity, trying to get into things, being visible so people see us flying the flag and the colors out and about. So that's another big benefit to have it is that the people that are already responding to help you currently are going to be even better prepared to do so because now they know where all the roads are and a lot more intimately connected with it.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. No other questions, I will put the warrant article to a vote. It's Article 4. To see if the town will support contracting with the New Hampshire State Police to do regular patrols and non-emergency calls. This coverage to be in addition to the emergency coverage now provided to the town of Dalton and to be paid for with the $15,000 in the operating budget for the police department. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries, 47 to 10. Article 5. To see if the town of Dalton will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the town-owned buildings improvement, expansion, and renovation CRF previously established. The board of selectmen recommends this warrant article. It is by majority vote required.
I move to accept Article 5 as read. I second the motion.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Kevin Cavan, 241 Harriman Road, Dalton. Don't we already have $28,000 in the capital reserve? So all the buildings have been gone through, pretty much. So why another $10,000?
Most of these warrant articles that are adding to the reserve accounts are standard and they've been doing these for the past couple of years. This is to continually add to the reserve account. So if something comes up, we do have money approved to take care of any building issues.
$28,000 seems like a pretty good start. I'd take a break from it. I think that would cover.
When was the, I mean, there are questions there. The seven, do you know when that was last patented? You do?
I don't know.
Oh, we got it. All I know is when it was pumped, which was a couple of years ago.
I know, but those are things that we were thinking of, Ruth. Do you know when that was?
That was three years ago. It was totally by over a roof until then. It was in the condition.
For how many years?
For how many years?
Yeah, did they give you like a 10-year lifespan?
They said approximately the type of the roof, it should be a good 10 years, but you get up and shovel and you can damage it.
Oh.
We were just thinking.
A year ago, the roof was leaking and we believe that there's some water damage in the police department office.
Yes, somewhere there is someone there. Do you know that there is someone there?
And I think the other concern was if something happened with the section of the building. So that's why the warrant.
Thank you.
Any other concerns or questions? Okay, I will put Article 5 to a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to be added to the town-owned building improvement, expansion, and renovation CRF. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries, 55 to 3. Article 6, Sewer Pumps CRF. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be added to the sewer pump renovation and replacement capital reserve fund. Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
I move to accept Article 6 as read. I second the motion.
Motion's open for discussion. No discussion? Yes, sir.
I, Eric Thompson, 433 French Road. Trying to figure this out. Because didn't Ms. Swan point out that the $10,000 was going to help torch the sewer? So why do we need to approve another $2,000 sewer?
Because this is not our sewer. This is not pertaining to this building. This is pertaining to the sewer pump.
We have 27 people on Bridge Hill and Group 135 that we have an agreement with Lundeberg and we pump their sewage. We pump their sewage over to Lundeberg and the pumps are very costly and we often have to replace them. The people that get the sewer coverage do pay a quarterly payment, but the town does pay money in due and we do have to repair those pumps. So it's just to build up the funds when a pump breaks. It's thousands of dollars when they do break.
And we have, what, two, three years ago?
Yeah, we actually had two rebuilt three years ago and I believe we have a sewer.
No matter what, it looks like in the budget, it looks like it was way up there.
Yes, right.
So that's what it's for. It's not really a regular answer here.
Enough for the questions, I will put the motion to a vote. All in favor of Article 6? All opposed? 46 to 4, motion carries. Article 7, the Highway Department CRF. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Highway Department Heavy Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
I move to accept Article 7 as read. I make a motion to second.
Any discussion on this? None, okay. All in favor of Article 7? All opposed? One, motion carries. Article 8, Savings CRF. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be added to the Paying Capital Reserve Fund. Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
I make a motion to accept Article 8 as read.
I second the motion for Article 8. Any discussion on Article 8?
No.
Is there a motion to amend it? I put the motion to a vote. All in favor of accepting Article 8 as read? Motion carries, all opposed? Anybody? One, two, three, four, five. Article 9. Fire Department CRF. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the Fire Department Vehicle Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
I make a motion to accept Article 9 as read.
I second the motion to accept Article 9 as read.
Floor's open for discussion. Anybody? Okay, I put to the floor to accept Article 9 as read. All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? The motion carries, 55 to 3. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to the Pay Per Bag Replacement Expendable Trust Fund. Previously established for the purchase of bags for the Pay Per Bag system. The source of these funds will be 25 cents from each bag sold. No taxes will be raised for this appropriation. Select Board recommends this article.
I make a motion to accept Article 10 as read.
I second the motion for Article 10. Any discussion on the Pay Per Bag warrants? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Dubrill, 753 Dalton. Bags, when you talk about bags, you talk about the bags for the... So my question to that is, everybody is paying for the bags. Why isn't that money being set aside to refurbish those bags instead of adding more money, you know, for the taxpayers to have to pay? Because we're going to keep nickel and diming. You know, it don't seem like much, but every time you add some little thing, the taxes keep growing and eventually after two years, it's going to... I mean, it's starting to grow now, I mean, you can see it. But I have to ask the question, what are you doing with the money that, you know, we're paying $17.50 for all? You've got all these people here, where's that money going? How's it being used?
So if you read this, it says no taxes will be raised with this appropriation. Basically, the money that we get from the bags goes back into general fund. In order to expend it to buy more bags, it needs to be voted on, to go out. So it's basically a wash.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Thank you.
I love this subject.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. 10.
She's trying to keep. Oh, all right. Sorry about that. She's going to take notes.
57 to 3. Article 11. Create Fire/EMS Equipment Fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a Fire EMS Equipment Capital Reserve Fund under the provision RSA 35 semi-colon one for putting aside funds to purchase or replace fire EMS equipment and to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
I make a motion to accept Article 11 as read.
I second the motion to accept Article 11 as read.
Floor's open to discussion? Yes, sir.
Can't ever find this thing. $10,001, 85 Landry Road, Dalton. Earlier we voted on the article for the vehicles. Now this article, there's no expenditure. It's going to go from this article for vehicles, am I right? None?
That is correct. This is for fire equipment.
This is for like Scott Air packs and defibrillators and things like that.
Exactly, yes.
Not vehicles?
Not vehicles, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Specialized equipment, it doesn't.
Yes, sir.
Frank Tillison, Jr., 409 Dalton Road. Our fire department and especially our chief does an outstanding job responding to all calls in the town. His response time is like sometimes under two or three minutes and he's on the road. And to give him the equipment in the fire department, the equipment that they need, it's not cheap stuff. So fighting for the future is a good idea. We're lucky to have a fire department EMS boy that responds to these calls in such short time. They're quicker than anybody else. And our fire chief serves a head for, you know, thank you and his men for responding. And I think that's a fair thing given the equipment that they need to carry on the service. I mean, they do a lot better than a police department does.
Any further comments?
I just want to be clear that this is for equipment, not for vehicles. The prior warrant article was a vehicle replacement fund. And in terms of examples of equipment, it's been discussed, but there are some actual displays in the back of the room if you'd like to look at them. And the cost of those pieces of equipment are on the table as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Kevin Cavan, 241 Harriman Road, Dalton. The only thing I might suggest is if you put in different wording just to make it for everybody to say that it's not for vehicles. Just add a line in there saying, "Equipment only, not vehicles."
All right, what has been stated is that to amend this warrant article with additional wording says specifically, "It is not." It's clarification, as stated by Dobath, "Not for vehicles." If I have a motion to amend the article, to read as such? Motion. I'll make the motion seconded. Your name, sir? Evan Wyndham, second. So we are voting on amending the wording in Article 11.
They have to write it down, Christine? It's going to be written down. Probably have that.
Okay.
Agrees with that fire department. I just want to make clarification so everybody's good. You want me to write it down?
Just rewrite the article the way you want it so it can be read that way.
Sorry for the delay, but it is state protocol. I'll determine when it will be rewritten. Okay, what I'm reading to you is the article amended. To see if the town will vote to establish a Fire EMS Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions RSA 35 semi-colon one for putting aside funds to purchase or replace fire and EMS equipment only, to exclude using funds for vehicles, and to raise and appropriate such funds in the sum of $10,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. So we're voting on this amended version. All in favor? All opposed?